I'd like to welcome you to the Extra Planning Board meeting of January 9th, 2025, 7:00 PM in the O'Whack Room. Start by introducing the board. I'm Langton Plummer, Chair of the Board, and to my left...
It's Gwen English.
And?
Excuse me, Nancy Belanger, Selectwood Representative.
Thank you. And to my right, right, right?
Good.
John Gruder.
Jen Martell.
Thank you. First item on the business are minutes. We haven't gotten the minutes recently, and we have just December 19th listed here, but I think there's a couple others that have not been done yet, so...
I think just the 20...
Then November 21st?
Yep.
So, and the 19th.
Yes.
So, let's look at November 21st. Any comments or corrections?
I only have one on page three of seven, line 113. The third sentence starts with she, and I believe that should be he.
Excuse me, what number did you say?
Line 113.
Oh, 113, I was 100 short.
Oh, she, oh, yeah, he.
Yeah, instead of she showed the gas line, it would be he.
Yep. And I have two that are on page five.
Okay.
Line 195, Ruth Hooten is H-O-O-T-E-N.
That line number again, please?
Um, that's on line 195.
195.
Yep. So, it's E-N, not O-N on Ruth Hooten.
Okay.
And then on line 207, John Maul, M-A-U-L-L.
Mm-hmm, maybe please know that.
And that's all I had on this. It's all clear.
Before we're taking comments, I'd like to introduce Erin Brown, our co-chair.
Hello again, twice in one day.
You must've gotten frozen and had to warm up, a little slower than the rest of us. Okay, well, welcome anyway. So, we're reviewing the minutes of the 17th.
You see that?
I think, no, excuse me, of the 21st of November. Would you like to look at my copy?
I'll have to look on with you. I didn't have a chance to get back to the house.
Really?
Yeah.
You didn't recognize the small envelope, that's what happened.
Yeah.
Usually we get our mentiros in the large, so we like little ones.
I wasn't here for that meeting, so I have nothing to offer.
Okay, nothing to offer. Then I'd welcome a motion.
I move to accept the meeting minutes of November 21st, 2024 as amended.
As amended?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Our voice vote is sufficient, so those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
All abstained.
And one abstention. Thank you very much. Now, we can move to the next set, which is that of December 19th.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
On page three of nine, line 121, it says Rob Belanger, and his last name is Belanger. I believe the spelling is B-O-L-A-N-G-E-R. That's the spelling from our previous meeting minutes.
Okay.
I tried to look it up, but I couldn't, so it's closer, but it's definitely not Belanger. So, it's in that line, and then it's also on page five of nine, line 184, second sentence.
Ah, yes, okay.
And I believe that was it for me.
Gwen has something, I think.
Yeah, I've got quite a few.
Trying to hide behind a mask. This morning, it was under her hat, now she's behind a mask.
Trying to go incognito. All right, let's start with page two of nine, line 76.
You've got it.
View scape. V-I-E-W-S-C-A-P-E, just combine those words.
Okay.
A viewscape.
Viewscape. And at the end of that sentence, time should be town.
Should be which?
Town.
Okay.
Not time.
Oh, yeah.
And then on... Oh, now I'm just clarifying what I had said. Line 92, I would like to add about the large building and drainage, so I'm adding and drainage, because that was my main point to make.
So, that's end of the sentence.
Yep, end of the sentence is and drainage. And then on line 99, just to clarify that statement, after delivery trucks... I've been having a lot of derogate... Let me just make sure, ask about Timberland where the insurance would be brought, who will reach out to vendors about having a... Oh, okay, after that, after trucks, it should say, use that road to avoid White Oak... Oh, use that... They not use that road to avoid White Oak. I'm sick.
Not use the Timberland Road.
Yes, I don't want them to use Timberland, and they don't... My request is that they know that, and that they reach out to vendors to make it clear that vendors should continue to use White Oak Drive and not Timberland during construction, That they not use, okay, I think it should just say trucks, that they not use that road to avoid White Oak. I'm sorry, I'm not very clear, I should have...
Not use...
What you're trying to say, I think what you're trying to say is clear.
Okay, I'm just not...
Well, you have a weird sentence already, trying to make that work.
How about this?
Just put a new sentence in.
Yeah.
That they will reach out to vendors about having a lot of delivery trucks, continue to use White Oak Drive and avoid Timberland.
Thank you, that's perfect.
There you go.
That's perfect, thank you.
You're just trying to make another one work.
I was.
Okay.
On 106, I had a lot of changes up front.
Wow, you haven't spoken for a while, Gwen. 106, huh?
On 106, my comment was, and I just added numbers together, on there were another five to six spots at the ridge. There actually are about 14 new paved spots and about five that are still gravel or dirt. So, eliminate the five to six spots and say another 14 paved and about five still dirt at the ridge.
And five or six not paved.
Down to 111, it's Hooten, H-O-O-T-E-N, again. Line 113, it's Mr. Severino, the E should be an O at the end. And then on line 16, I don't remember saying anything about the footprint of the building, so if we could just eliminate from footprint to torn down and, so that... So, footprint of the building being torn down and eliminate that.
But solar panels sounds like you.
Yeah, I did ask about that, and then put, I guess, weather, oh, eliminate that weather and just say, and whether Riverwoods is considering installing them on the building, and continue on with the rest of the sentence as it's written. So, Ms. English asked about solar panels and whether Riverwoods is considering installing them on the building, and Ms. Vogel indicated yes to the solar panels.
We don't need that now.
When you say building, you're talking about the new building?
Yes.
Yeah.
And you can put that in. And 125, I had, I looked at the letter that was sent. It's at the end of the sentence on 125, it's J-O-H-A-N-N, and the last name is R-O-T-H-W-A-N-G-L. And 188, Hooten, again, H-O-O-T-E-N.
Which?
Uh, 188.
188. Ah, you're getting ahead of us here. Well, that would be 85.
And 177, again, Jack Maul, M-A-U-L-L. It says inaudible, but it's Jack Maul. And, oh, I didn't get this one. On 218, Dave, this is your, I don't, I'm not quite sure, 218, it said off Haven Lane with 32 E bedrooms. I'm not sure what that...
It's an E bedroom.
That was a...
Well, I never said it'd be...
We didn't count bedrooms.
No.
So, I don't know what we should do with that.
How many units is that? I thought it was 34.
32 bedroom units.
No.
36 units and...
I don't know, how many bedrooms?
Is that 32 single bedroom?
No, no, they didn't, I don't think, I wouldn't have said that, because I don't know how many bedrooms are in each.
Yeah, it didn't sound like something.
Probably three, but I...
I think there were two, but there's a couple of the ones that have direct access are three, and then the big buildings all one...
Two and three?
I wouldn't have said that.
Yeah.
I know I wouldn't have said bedrooms, I don't believe.
You don't need, you could just eliminate it.
32, yeah.
Yeah.
Just eliminate that.
Probably wouldn't change it anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, just strike that whole sentence, I guess. I mean, you can go to the file and see what's proposed.
Okay, the whole sentence, you want it?
Yeah, just take off, there would be a, that, just get rid of that sentence.
That is, oh, wait a minute. One last one. I think on 329, I think it, I think Lang, you may have said he asks that the building corners be marked? Is that what CO is? On, on 329.
329, I'm looking at 299.
Oh, 329, sorry.
329, dig the wax on my ears here.
I would imagine.
Corners.
Yeah.
Ah, nope, there we are. 329, crying out loud, I can't even find it. Getting hot, Haven Lane, asks that the building be marked.
The building CO be marked. You would say corners, the building corner?
Corners, yeah.
I think you did.
Yeah.
I think I...
Corners, yeah, we always ask for corners.
Yep.
And middle roadway.
Right.
Yeah, and that's what they did.
Are you finished, Ms. English? Jen, would you have anything to add to that?
I had one, and now I can't find it. I was, I saw it as...
Nuts.
I had one.
Oh, you know, because I would be in the wrong set. Sorry, just one second. Here it is, okay. Line 114.
Okay, give us a minute to get there, 114. Yes.
It says 12,000 cubic yards would be removed and five to six yards of granular fill will be brought in, and I would just like that number to be checked, because I thought the number was much higher, of granular fill to be brought in. I don't know what it was, but it was not, it was more than five to six yards.
Yeah, they're taking out 12,000.
So, you're not sure about the amount?
Yeah, just verify the amount.
Just say granular fill, no number?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I asked about the balance, so I think the number's important.
Yeah.
Oh, you want to figure it out? That seems very light.
He'll have to look, he'll have to look at the tape.
Circle it, I guess.
John, did I hear you said you, oh, excuse me, are you finished, Jen?
Sorry, John.
What's that, Jen?
I'm all set, yes.
I'm all set.
You have something else?
Uh-uh.
No? All right. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move to approve the minutes, meeting minutes of December 19th, 2024 as amended.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded? Voice vote is adequate for these minutes? Excuse me, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? You're all set this time, John? Thank you very much for the detail. Now, the next highlighted item on the agenda is the public hearing on proposed zoning amendments for the 2025 town meeting warrant, copies of which are in the full text, proposed amendments are available in the planning office and posted on the town website. So, Dave, I will turn to you, I believe, on this one.
Thank you, it's a pretty straightforward amendment, and there's one amendment this year, and as I noted at back, I think at the November 21st Planning Board meeting, the Housing Advisory Committee proposed a zoning amendment to define short-term rentals and allow them in certain districts. Right now, it's not clear in the zoning ordinance that where they are, if they are allowed, so the Housing Advisory Committee wanted to define them and, and allow for them in a couple of spots in town. So, the specific definition that they're proposing would be short-term rentals, any individually or collectively owned, a single-family house or dwelling unit, or any unit or group of units in a condominium, cooperative or timeshare, or owner-occupied residential home that is offered for a fee and for less than 30 consecutive days. That's the definition, short-term rentals, rental for 30 days in a unit. And then amend Article 4, Section 4.2, Schedule 1, permitted uses by adding short-term rental as permitted use in the C1, Central Area Commercial, and WC Waterfront Commercial zoning districts. So, the C1 is the small district, there's this small one on Lincoln Street, and there's a one here, we're in it, right here, it goes and extends up High Street, out Portsmouth Ave to Walgreens, just on either side, the frontage, and then the WC is basically Water Street, across the street here, along the river. So, the Housing Advisory Committee recognized that it is a use, people do use it, and they thought using it in a place where there is already density and so forth, and, you know, traffic, what have you, then it wouldn't be as disruptive, because sometimes short-term rentals can be, to some, can be disruptive in a single-family neighborhood.
Yeah.
So, that was part of it. The other part of it is they're concerned about housing and providing long-term rentals for folks, and there is an argument out there that, that they were, you know, discussed that, that takes away any, any unit that gets taken out of the rental, the long-term rental, and goes into an Airbnb, is not available for someone who wants to live and work here long-term, so it can have adverse effect on long-term rental prices and availability. So, they recognized it was a use that they wanted to allow, but they wanted to allow it in certain areas, and that is the proposal.
Have we had trouble in town? I mean, that, some of the places that are short-term rentals, there's a lot of, too much activity, that type of thing, or?
There have been some, I wouldn't say a lot, but there have definitely been complaints to the code enforcement officer. The code enforcement officer has been out and enforcing that, because he, you know, if it's, right now, it's not even mentioned in the zoning ordinance or defined, and he considers it prohibited townwide. So, if we do get a complaint, but it's just, I think it's always better to define it, put it in there, because when you're enforcing it against someone, then it's always good to say, yeah, we, we recognize it, we define what it is, and we allow it here and prohibit it here. That's generally how you should, you know, I would recommend approaching it, and that's what the Housing Advisory Committee considered and are proposing to the Planning Board.
So, this defines it and also where, also says where it applies.
Where it's allowed.
Where it's allowed, excuse me, yes.
And then, and any other zoning, any, all the other zoning districts, it would not be allowed.
Did the Housing Advisory Committee discuss having short-term rentals allowable in, like, rural districts, like the R5 or something? I'm just thinking about, like, people who have, like, a yurt that they want to put on Airbnb or things like that, and they've got a ton of land, they're not going to bother anyone.
So, there were three areas that were discussed, not rural areas.
Okay.
And there's no vote, because we didn't have a call, so we just had a discussion.
Right, I was just wondering if that came up in the conversation and what ideas were mentioned.
Yeah, they did, they, like, where do you want to allow them in town?
Yeah.
I mean, we looked at a townwide map, we looked, you know, so, I mean, you can't catch every one, there's always an opportunity for variance from this. If you had a yurt and you're like, you know, you, you had 20 acres and, and no one would disturb, then there is a mechanism to go and do that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
But they did discuss townwide, they like, where in town, and we went through the maps, and they settled on what is being proposed.
We talked specifically about three, and then limited to these two.
What was the third that you discussed?
Well, you know, you discussed townwide in, but then realistically, you were thinking C2, C1, C1, C2, and WC, so adding the C2, which is a little section out on Epping Road, and continued to Portsmouth Ave all the way down to the Stratton Town Line.
So, what is that dovetail with, in terms of what's allowed in those zones already? Isn't there, like, hotel allowed there?
Yeah, hotels, yeah, it's a, those two districts are pretty much, you can do everything except industrial uses.
Yeah, okay. So, really, I understand what we're doing, but it's really not a zoning change. It's a change, because we're defining something, we're adding it, but it's really not, if they were, if someone were doing that, in your opinion, I know Doug Eastman's not here right now, if someone were doing a short-term rental in those zones now, like an Airbnb, do you think Doug would consider that prohibited in those zones today?
Yes.
He would, even though, aren't those hotel allowed, but has to be approved?
Well, hotels are allowed, but hotels are, are different animal, they have their own definition, that, and, you know, Airbnbs are, short-term rentals are not hotels. Maybe you wouldn't get as many complaints or get any complaints if they were in these districts.
I'm assuming any complaints he's had were not in those districts.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. The complaints he's had are in the R1, RU, R, you know?
Yeah.
Small red...
Neighborhoods.
Yeah, neighborhoods, single-family neighborhoods.
The amount of traffic probably disturbing a neighbor, or two, or neighborhood.
Yeah, or people coming and going late nights.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, people coming and going late nights, you know, a lot of turnover.
Yeah.
Trash, you know, what have you.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, to me, it's a step in the right direction, in terms of allowing something that is happening, and it probably, to me personally, if hotels are allowed, they're not allowing short-term rentals, it's just a different form of short-term rental.
Yeah, yep.
Is silly, I think you shouldn't...
Under a different banner, yeah.
Yeah.
But the hotel has people on, working overnight.
It's a different animal.
It's different, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
It's controls that you don't have with the Airbnb.
They also have parking.
Huh?
They also have parking.
Yeah.
Well, these would need parking, right? No?
That was really not discussed, what would we do?
It's what is existing, it's just, you know, like...
That's my only concern.
Yeah, well, that's the thing I've never understood with it. It's like, some of the occupancy issues of the Airbnb stuff, to me, I just, I have a hard time putting my mind around how it conforms to code. You know, if you have a multifamily property, you have to have fire escapes, you know, fire rated windows, get big enough, you have to have sprinkler systems, you know, these people just throw someone in a bedroom, right? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, it can be, it can be a unit, can be a part of the unit.
So, how, how does Doug handle something like that? If someone's got a five-bedroom colonial home, that's just a single family with one entryway, in the main hallway, you go up a flight of stairs, you share a couple bathrooms, whatever the rights they give them, and it's, I don't know, I call it more like a boarding house.
Well, that, we have boarding house defined in our...
But isn't that more like a boarding house?
That sounds like a boarding house, where you share, share facilities.
What's a short-term rental?
A short-term...
I understand time, but what is it physically?
Physically.
Yeah. What are we allowing?
I guess there, I mean, it's defined as a individually or collectively owned, single- single-family house or dwelling unit, or any group of units in a condo cooperative timeshare or owner-occupied residential home. So it's a unit. So a unit usually.
Colonial.
No, no, a unit usually has sleeping, eating, sanitary, has those kind of three elements to be considered a unit. Where a boarding house has a room and you share a kitchen.
Okay.
I believe short-term rentals or unit has its, has to have its own cooking facilities, its own.
Restaurant.
Rest, yeah, you know, and its own sleeping.
So.
Sleeping, eating.
So you're saying if someone had a five-bedroom colonial with two bathrooms and one kitchen, they could only rent it to one party?
Well, if they rent it to multiple parties in different rooms, then that's a boarding house. It's not a short-term rental.
But don't you, okay. I just, I would think that's going to happen. And probably already does.
There's always gray areas that you're probably going to hit. You can't write it, so you get them all. So I'm sure you could find a scenario where you're like, okay, which one? So then in that case, you're like, okay, it's one of them. Which one makes more sense? It's either a short-term rental or it's a boarding house. And is it allowed? And if it isn't, then they enforce it.
Yeah, so I can, I can just say some of the things that I followed in Portsmouth is that that was the problem with some of the neighbors is that a group of people would rent a house. And that's where the problem would be. You could have six people renting a house and there'd be six additional, six cars or, you know.
Yeah.
So, and that's a concern. And I don't know.
Yeah, right, I get it.
So I guess if they're renting the whole house, those six of them.
But that's different. If they rent the house as a group, as a collective.
That's a, yeah, well, less than 30 days.
Then it's a short term.
That's a short term.
Then it's a short term.
Yeah.
So it could be.
But if someone's renting to people who don't know each other or even do know each other, individual rooms.
Right.
Then that's a boarding house.
And that would be a tough thing to distinguish unless somebody went in and asked them, do you know each other? Right? So, I don't know.
Yeah.
So bed and breakfasts are not part of this?
No, bed and breakfast has its own definition. And they have to have, they have to have breakfast.
And the owner has to be there.
They have to serve breakfast, the owner lives on premises.
Yep, okay. Well, I need to open this to the public. It is a public hearing. So if there's anybody in the public this evening, please step to the table and introduce yourself so our viewers at home can see and we will know who's speaking. So this is the time for the public may speak.
She just had nothing to do tonight.
Oh, well.
She's here to learn. She's interested in joining the committee.
Not seeing anybody approach the table to speak, I will close the public session and hope that more people come for the second hearing. That's going to be in the library.
That's right.
A lot of company.
Yes.
You do want to have a second?
Do we have to?
No.
Oh, we don't have to, okay. You sure you don't want to speak?
Because the other 50 people couldn't fit.
You'd be the only public weighing in tonight.
So then I would say you take, continue the public hearing until January 23rd at 7:00 PM at the Exeter Public Library. If you were going to give another opportunity for, not a bad idea, you have it.
I think we should.
You have the time. People could watch this, you know.
That would be nice.
And then not know about it and say, hey, I got something to say. And they can either send me an email, you know, between now and then, or they can show up at the meeting. And there's no, there's no harm in.
No, there's not.
In just continuing the public hearing until January 23rd at 7:00 PM. Or do you want to, that's going to be a full agenda already. I don't know if we're going to be able to get to.
We won't be able to.
The third application that's already on there.
Yes.
Because the two that are coming back that have been on the, and we've been taken till 10, if we go, there's a third one on the agenda now after that.
What's, what's the timeframe?
What do you mean?
When, when does this have to be approved?
No, this is it. So I was going to suggest, would reduce, I'd put it on the front of the agenda, but do you want to do 6:45?
This you're talking about?
The, yeah, the public hearing.
You think we're going to get through three hearings that night? I think your agenda is already.
I don't either.
No, I don't determine that. I mean, the state law dictates that when they submit an application, if it's complete for review purposes, it goes on the agenda within 30 days. So I don't have a, you know, like, I can say, I can, well, I told them. I said, there's a good chance you, you won't be hurt. And like, okay, we'll, we'll take the chance. We don't have a say in that. It's all dictated by laws that they want to, they're on the agenda that they're getting on the agenda.
They have the right to know.
Can you ask them if they would prefer to be on the following agenda?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah. And, but one of them is the same person that's going to be there. So why not?
They're there anyway.
They're going to be there anyway. They're the second one and the third. So if they get to the second, they'll already be there. So I understood. I was like, yeah, okay. I just told them, you know, be, you know, just be forewarned that we might not get to you.
I think meetings 15 minutes early to have a public meeting about this would make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
So do you want to continue it until 6:45 PM?
6:45.
January 23rd, 6:45 PM at the Exeter Public Library.
Public Library.
Perfect.
Somebody got a motion to say set?
Well, wait, that, so they're going to come in and there's going to be another 50 people in the room. It's going to be hard to keep that to 15 minutes because there'll be a lot of people, oh, I didn't know that. We're going to open up a lot of discussion.
Well, I mean.
I mean, you can go, I can go to whenever.
I don't want to go to eight, you know, 7:30, a quarter of eight, and then have trouble getting the other two.
Can we kick into the meeting after?
Yeah, that would be.
We have to get it done.
That's it.
That's it. Well, let's roll the dice.
This was publicized, right?
Oh, yes, it's been noticed.
And no one's here.
Well, this is like CIP. These are the meetings.
Oh, I see what you're saying. You're saying, well, we're going to bring it to a table where there's an, an audience that's already there that didn't come there for that, but since it's, now I want to talk about it. So I get you, yeah. I don't know, it's up to the board.
They may have something valuable to contribute.
Well, they might, but it might be.
I hear what you're saying too.
Build it, you know, it's going to be pretty.
I think John makes a good point in regards to, I think this is a very cut and dry issue, frankly. To me, we're not expanding it in a zone that extremely similar uses aren't already happening. That's why I brought up the hotel thing. Hotels are already happening in these zones that short-term rentals are proposed to be allowed. If we were expanding it, like Jennifer brought up as a consideration to more rural zones, that's a different can of worms to me.
Yeah.
This is just getting it on the books and, you know, zoning changes. So if people want to expand it and have a deeper dive, it probably isn't going to happen this session anyway.
Yes.
It's probably not going to happen two weeks from today. Right?
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I'm, I would consider just moving forward with it as is now and not having a second hearing, I think.
Is that a motion?
Yeah. It's a motion.
You could move to forward the proposed amendment regarding short-term rentals to the March 2025 town warrant as presented?
So moved.
Second. Moved to second. This will require, let's see, we're not on Zoom tonight, so we'll do a hand vote. How's that?
Whatever you.
Jen, how would you vote tonight?
Um, yes. And I, can I just make a comment?
That's a voice.
I just did a quick search.
A quick check, here we go.
On Airbnb.
This is the time to bring it up.
Like we're saying, oh, it's not happening. There's quite a few people that, you know, you just do a Google search and it's on there. So I do think.
In the, in different zones is what you're saying?
Right, it's a little hard to tell, but I mean.
Well, they're not in compliance now.
And I don't know, I mean, I'm not looking at every listing. There might be more than 30 days. I mean, that would be totally legit. I guess what I'm saying is like, as somebody who used to earn some money to pay for my mortgage with, by renting out an apartment in short-term rentals, I see the value of that, especially in this real estate market. And to limit it to such a small area, I think is, might be shortchanging some of these people who are currently making income on it. I know they may not be doing it, it's not legitimate now, maybe, because it's not our zoning.
It's not legitimate.
Um, but by making it legitimate in some areas, then maybe we're kind of discriminating against other people. So I think it's just something to think about. I really haven't given it much thought beyond.
Well, this goes to the people to make the decision.
Yeah.
It just goes to the people to make the final decision.
Correct.
However.
But I think we could.
Yeah.
I feel like people really take our vote on it serious.
But they're either going to say yes or no. They're either going to say, yes, well, we are okay with allowing it in these couple zones. Right now, it's not allowed anywhere.
Right.
So this is a step towards allowing it in more zones, right?
Mm-hmm.
But their vote is not, no, we don't want to just allow it there. We want to allow it in a couple other zones. We'd have to change this proposal to do that. You know what I'm saying? So I think that's what you're bringing up.
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering if it's something that.
If we should expand it?
If it, yeah, if it's, if we should have the conversation about possibly expanding it.
Well, I think maybe, I would like to consider that maybe expanding it next year, but I'd like to see what this, if it passes, how it works out for a year.
Mm-hmm, that's a good idea.
That, that was my thought about why, just to get it done tonight. Because this is a step in the right direction. It's pretty unlikely that we're going to get through expanding it tonight or next week, or next minute.
So yeah, if we could just consider what is being recommended. See how it works out with the additional parking, any problems or whatever. And then if it's something you want to take up, maybe next year, we could consider expanding it next year.
And if one of these folks who are not in the zones that it's going to be allowed in wanted to go to the zoning board and request, what would they be doing, like requesting a?
Variance.
Variance? But how arduous?
That's what they'd have to do now, everywhere.
Okay.
It's not, we're not making it harder.
It's the same process they'd have to do. It is, it is a high threshold because it's prohibited. It's one of the harder things to get in town for a permit because it's not permitted, it's not permitted via special exception, it's prohibited. So it is the high, highest bar, if you will. But they, you know, they grant them all the time for, if they meet the criteria. There's five criteria that you have to meet.
Okay.
And if they meet it, they get it. And, and a lot of those, you know, aren't supposed, you know, like technically aren't.
Yeah, I'm not calling anyone out.
No, and it's, but it's, but we understand that and we looked into that. But that's, it's not something, this is something more that it's complaint-driven. It's not.
Doug doesn't go on.
You know, we're not, we're not out searching for it. It's just, you know, if, if people complain and have an issue and it's causing, you know, you know, you know, it's upsetting people in a neighborhood and, you know, that live here permanently and, you know, and can't enjoy their reasonable use of their property, then that's where, that's where it becomes useful for the code enforcement.
I'm just trying to look at it from the other angle of like, oh, how come all of a sudden now this person's property is so much more valuable because they're in the right zone, because now they can do short-term rentals, but I can't?
Well, and I'll talk, so another thing that's still being discussed that hasn't been decided on, about changing whether our parking ordinances and whether we want to do something different with our winter parking ban and things. So there's a lot of parking questions still up in the air. So that's another concern of mine. Until we have a good conversation, public conversation about what that might look like, I'm a little hesitant about adding too many more obstacles for our parking situation.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we have a motion on, and a second, and we're discussing right now.
We're discussing it, yep.
And the motion is to put it to the people.
Yeah, as presented.
I thought the motion was to discuss it next week.
No, it was to.
Oh, we just said not to.
Move the proposed amendment regarding short-term rentals to the March 2025 town.
Okay, okay, sorry. So we're not doing that.
Yeah.
That's the motion.
That's the motion. You haven't done anything yet.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Jen?
Can I go last?
All right, let's see, I'll just swivel the chair.
She's hedging.
John, how about your favor?
Just give ourselves some.
I'll vote yes.
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 So now it does make a difference.
Yeah. I'm going to say no.
Motion carries.
I'd rather discuss it more.
Thank you very much. This is good discussion, you know.
I think that would be a very, I think John brought up a good point about that being a very challenging discussion at our next year.
It could be, yeah, I think so.
And I agree.
6:45 may not be long enough.
And my thing is it just, we got it, and it's up to the voters.
After 10 o'clock and people go home disappointed.
It's a step in the right direction.
That's how I look at things like this. It's not whether.
Yeah.
Right, it's up to the voters.
Right. Okay, moving along, any more master plan discussion at all?
Yeah, I just have one thing. And I'm not sure I told you this, if I did, I apologize for repeating myself, but the complete street study, like the one thing in the master plan that we haven't started yet, one of the 66 or 67 tasks that we haven't done anything with. The select board, I think I told you that, the select board set aside ARPA funds, the American Rescue Act funding, to fund that study. And we went under contract, those, those funds have to be obligated by the end of 2024, had to be obligated, and then spent by the end of 2025. So the end of this year. And we went under contract in 20, at the end of 2024 to do the complete street studies with the Regional Planning Commission. And they'll be starting that effort, you know, in the near future. So that's exciting.
That's good.
And, and that's it for master plan discussion.
Okay, field modifications?
None requested.
None requested. Too cold to work. Uh, bond or letter credits?
Yeah, we had one, actually today, we, we tended to, well, we approved it and sent it to request to finance to issue the check for Meredith Village Savings Bank at Meeting's Place.
Well, that's a current one anyway.
Huh?
That's a current one anyway.
Yeah, that's, that's been done, yeah, we, we're done with all the.
Research.
The, the, the paying, all the people we couldn't find or didn't give them back for a while, so Barb was great about that. But this one was a, a current one, uh, they submitted their as-built, and they've fulfilled all the conditions of approval and built the site per plan, and got UEI sign off, and, uh, they're, we're giving them back there.
That is, that seemed to go up awful quick, too.
Yeah, that was, that went without a hitch, too, it was, it was, yeah, it went well.
Okay.
That's all I have.
I have one question that was asked today, this, this morning at the sidewalk.
Yes.
And it's, I don't know if you all have an answer, but, um, some of the public that was there heard them say the applicants for 76 Portsmouth Ave are gonna give you some modified plans on Monday, and somebody mentioned they didn't know if it was a technical review committee that was gonna be needed again. It's probably a premature question to ask you, but I'm gonna ask anyway.
Because we have a new set of plans.
Because you won't know until you see them at that.
Yeah, I mean.
Highly unlikely.
We'll have to see, I mean, we usually don't.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, we usually go to a technical review committee, we, you know, we give our, all our comments, and plans get revised, and we don't have a follow-up one.
And that's why I wanted to ask you.
Sometimes we do, uh, and we discuss that at the TIC, like we did this morning. We discussed it and decided not to for a different project, so we usually discuss it and, and have it. I don't think this one warranted.
Yeah, I just suggested they keep an eye on the agenda, but.
The unit count hasn't changed, the, you know, they have, instead of going in and out, they're, they're ewing now. They, they've, uh, they've done that, that you saw today, it's kind of so the fire can, you know, public safety can loop right through. Um, but I don't think there's really enough changes to.
Thank you.
To warrant a second technical review committee.
It was a little cold and windy and hard to have the Q and A this morning, so.
It was tough, yeah.
I say, save a question for here.
Well, I have, I have a related question. My, back of my head is, is a little irritated that we may be asked to, to approve a, a project that can't start till five years from now, and it may end up being 10 years.
I would suggest, uh, continuing this discussion during the public hearing, or the, or the agenda, when it's on the agenda.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So you, you'd want to divide it to two projects?
I guess so.
Do the one that you're ready for.
I'm guess.
They're gonna discuss it anyway. So, uh, question, when we go at that hearing, don't we normally read who attended the sidewalk into the minutes? I thought we brought that up in the past.
It's in the minutes.
It would be in.
How is it in the minutes? You submit it, you submit it to the?
We did the minutes, Kristen did the minutes.
Today? All right, so that'll be part of our minutes when we approve them.
Probably separate.
Next package, I guess. Is that what you're telling me?
If, if Kristen gets them to Barb, and Barb gets them to you by then.
But it will show up, is my.
They will show up, yes.
All right, good, and I.
Yeah, today was tough, though, like, my pen didn't work because it was so cold. And I was like, oh, I gotta bring a pencil if it's below freezing. Uh, so I couldn't get the public that was there.
Of course, right, but you got the board.
We got board members.
You had a good turnout, actually.
Yeah, and we had a lot of people there.
A good turnout in the public and the board.
Yeah.
Oh, I usually do.
Oh, do you?
Oh, yeah, Riverwoods, I hunted everyone down and got their name.
Really?
Yeah, you've never seen him scouting people out. He does.
I guess I have a run of minutes.
To the crowd.
Yeah.
No, it's usually for sidewalks that, you know, and, and.
Maybe that's what you do, have a clipboard.
And we do, but it was just, it was a different animal this morning.
And we had people coming from a few different directions, too, at different times.
Coming through the woods at us.
And then we're all taking different paths.
Walking through that area wasn't easy, and some people didn't do that.
So, so whoever does do the sidewalks in the future, who like does the talking, they really might want to, like, we might want to suggest that they have some kind of.
Megaphone.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because you can't, it's hard to hear people when you have okay hearing, but there are people that attend that don't have okay hearing, and then add the wind and stuff on top, and.
Today was particularly different.
Our ears covered over, and.
Yeah.
It's a challenge, for sure.
It is, it was just a thought.
No, I thought the same thing. Megaphone would have gone well today. Tough conditions today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did it. Anything else? Will we go to the other?
A thought.
John, you got a motion for us?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you so much. Second, thank you for coming, thank you for coming to the nice, warm sidewalk this morning.
Yeah, you had a good turnout, Lynn.
We did, the whole board, well.
Pretty much.
For us.
Like everybody that was gonna go made it.
You need to gavel so Exeter TV knows.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report